Here we are live on YouTube. Awesome. And we are in session is five thirty. Welcome to the October first meeting of Rockwell City Council. Uh, we'll start with public forum. What do you have any discuss? So the agenda. Hearing none, we'll move right into it. Uh, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from previous meeting.
Also.
Tracy, is there a second? Second for Randy. There's a discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Pos. Motion carries unanimously. Alright, new business. Bills ready?
Yes.
I'll make the motion approval.
Randy, okay. The bills, is there a second?
No, second.
Tracy. Any discussion on the bills? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Pos. Okay, the detour. Um, we talked about the detour last week. Oh, my notes. Here they are. Um, I had a conversation with Mary Kelly at the DOT. Um, the two questions that came up, the speed limit digital sign for solar. Uh, she's like, yeah, sure. If you want to purchase one, you're more than welcome to have one. So they're not gonna give us one, they'll sell us one. She didn't give me a price, but um, I didn't think we were interested in buying one because we've looked at them before and they were expensive. So.
Yeah.
Yeah, she didn't really recommend it either that we buy one, but um, yeah, she didn't really seem interested in that. And then the other, I know we discussed it in the room. I was trying to backtrack in my mind about the weight limits. I know we had a discussion about Reese and I asked her about it. I said, what can we do about weight limits? And she said that we can do something with oversized overweight. We can limit that, but we can't limit semi. So we don't want to do that because we had school buses. We don't do anything with a weight limit.
Sure.
But overweight, oversized, if we can limit that. She goes, uh, we'll look into it and see. And uh, but we gotta make sure that Johnny Reese doesn't have anything overweight, oversized, or he can't come through. So, um, maybe they know. Does he have anything like that? Does Johnny Reese have anything overweight, oversized?
He has a massive friggin excavator.
Yeah.
I thought, I thought Soup said he was.
He was fine because he's got.
Cause he was a business.
He's their only sport.
Right.
The business in town.
Because that's his only way in or out. I don't think you want to drive him through town.
Of course.
No.
But yeah, she's gonna look into it to make sure that she, that we can do that. If so, um, yeah, she's gonna be back again that, make sure that's a kosher. And then after that, um, yeah, she recommended that we take pictures of the road.
Have you done that?
No. No, the, the day before it starts.
Right.
And then the day it's, a day it's over.
It didn't make a matter now, but.
No, the day the detour starts.
Right, that's what I, that's what I understood.
Yeah, it doesn't matter. Like, they're not gonna take it to today, they're gonna take it the day the detour starts.
That's kind of what I figured.
So that's in the spring. And I'll help us fix anything that gets damaged between the detour. And then again, the number is an estimate of based on the amount of days the road is.
Is.
The detour, yeah. So if it's over longer, we'll get more, plus.
Pretty low ball estimate.
Yeah. That is what I know. She's kind of short with me. So that's what I know. On the detour, any other question that you need to take back to the DOT? Any concerns? Do we want to wait till we have full council before we approve the detour? There's no rush to do this.
I mean, I would wait, why don't we just wait till she gets back to us on?
That's fine too. Yeah, it was absolutely, you know, again, it's not until the spring. They're gonna do that project anyway, so.
Let's just table it then.
Yeah, that's fine. I'll attend that motion.
I'll make a motion to table the approval of the detour.
Okay. Motion, Randy, table the detour.
Second.
Matthew, all in favor?
Aye.
Both motion, okay. Motion to table. Anybody who's unanimous? Okay. Uh, website. I think it's the fault discussion from last week. Adam's here again. Everybody have a chance to review the website material?
I looked at Ogden's, so I really liked the video they have on there.
Mm-hmm.
That the police reports are available. Um, I think we could utilize it instead of Facebook where people can comment and find issues. Cause there's no, none of that on there. Um, the upcoming events were very easy to find. It's very community driven, has all the businesses and suit with contact information, and I really liked that as well. Um, and then just I thought to assess some of the costs if we were to go with it, I thought maybe if like the Booster Club, the fire department, the police department, the library throws in fifty dollars, a hundred dollars, something. Then we can keep their information updated as well. Towards that thousand dollars, but it costs per year. Just an idea. That's my nonsense.
Freehold donation.
Yeah. Yeah.
No lines.
So, I got a question for Adam.
Um, so just to refresh me ears, um, the twenty-two fifty, the initial year subscription, subscription is in that?
Or do we have to pay another thousand dollars on top of that?
So there's two, there's two costs. There's six thousand dollars and then one thousand dollars. Okay. The six thousand dollars is a cost to develop the new website and migrate everything over. And then after year one, it would be a thousand dollars per year. So that six thousand dollars initial upfront cost covers everything for that first calendar year. The first twelve months.
What's the two thousand two hundred fifty?
That was what we were paying.
That's to, to stay with what we've got.
Okay.
Yeah. So we need to do something. We either go to the latest and greatest, or we just go with what we got. And.
But that's twenty-two. It's an upgrade, it's not the same website. He's gonna rebuild the website.
He's gonna rebuild it.
Yes.
You remember what the initial startup price was for that website?
It's been.
Was it?
Seven years.
I thought it was like three grand. Is that sound right?
Actually, I think it was twenty-five hundred and then he's given us a two hundred and fifty dollar break on this one, so that's where he worked. Our customer. So it might have been.
Somewhere around there.
Randy has a premium three hundred annually plus twenty dollars for the domain name. So I'm glad.
Now, it's seven years ago. I can't believe you said this to me. Sorry, Kevin. So sorry.
I guess the positives that I look at is, one, it aligns with what the county is doing.
Correct.
It'll be similar, so it's not something totally different than what the county is when you're looking at both this parent or looking for information. So you're gonna like limit two websites. Um. I guess the other positive is having Adam in town and being able to troubleshoot any thing that we have. Um. That's the two positives I have. I like the county website. I think you can navigate around that fairly quickly and it has everything you want on it.
User friendly?
User friendly, yeah. I mean, I mean, to be honest with you, I don't think the website we have right now was real user friendly. Or we would, it'd be a little bit easier for us to get stuff on.
Well, it isn't. It was all kind of encrypted, like how you had to.
I mean, that's just my take on it anyway.
I don't think it'll be like that if he does the upgrade on it.
Okay.
I don't know anything about the website, my website.
So that's my opinion. And I like Abby's idea of including the nonprofits in on it if they want to make a donation to it. Then post their events and stuff also. And. Cause they basically just, I mean, the nonprofits basically have a Facebook page and that's it. And this would be good on my website that people can turn to also.
And to be honest with you, not everybody uses Facebook, so. Right.
So we could give them their own page on that page.
Uh, not necessarily a page.
It would be like a subcategory.
Yeah, it would be under government services would be your public safety. And then you can have another category for businesses, nonprofits, things like that. And then they can each have contact information and things like that.
So, yeah.
Yeah, like a one page kind of thing.
Like, like the one of in Ogden, they have like available spaces, um, business factory, childcare, clubs and organizations. They have like a new residence stuff, so I don't know, I just feel like it was.
Comprehensive.
Yeah, there's a school district part, so all their information throughout the town is right in one place. That's what I liked about their website.
Orna, what would this come out?
Equipment or what? Could be some local option. Maybe better.
That's a big few of them.
I like the idea of Adam managing that because I think more ideas is.
Right. I mean, I don't betray anybody here, he knows.
Yeah.
He can come to us and say, hey, this would be good for the site.
Yeah. I mean, I'm not saying it would, I mean, you're still gonna be involved because you gotta be, but um, it wouldn't become another task for you.
Instead of us having a couple of ideas, he already knows, like, hey, this would be good for your site, you should do this and that.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve using Neapolitan Labs for our new website at the cost of six thousand dollars. To move the city forward.
I'm ready to approve the bid from Neapolitan Labs at the cost of six thousand dollars to post our new website, rockwell.com. Plus, I think I said the cost of six thousand dollars, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Matthew, any other discussion?
Not ready.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Pos. Sorry, I didn't format when I saw that.
No.
Uh, alright, vacancy tax sometimes. Um, sent that to Attorney Barry. I have not heard back from him yet, it's been under a week. Um, attorney's working getting that drawn up for us. Um, so no action at this time. I'm gonna table that. We'll just get it on the agenda again for next time. There's nothing else we need to discuss, I mean, we discussed it last meeting, so. Get that drawn up and get that approved at the next meeting. Um, equipment, Zach, have we got some draft stuff?
Yeah, I talked to Steller. Um, they said they ain't gonna be able to beat what we got, from what I've already found out here. I tried Truck Specialties, they never answered the phone, they have yet to call me back. I talked to Howie down in Hampton. He hasn't got back to me. I talked to Avenue Sales over in Floyd. He has also not got back to me, but he sells aluminum ones and he's thinking that it would probably be about ten grand-ish. But he hasn't got me a literal hard number. So I got nothing other than what I've already reported, I suppose. But I've been all around.
Six, seven, six, three companies.
Round and round, yes.
Yeah, it sounds like you've been around the tri-com area.
Everyone that's, what I've talked to has said that we got good options here and that's a dang good price, so.
Do you want to review those prices again for today?
Yes, I have an H and H trailer, H and H is the brand. Um, eighty-two inches wide by twenty feet long, sixteen tilt, four stationary. That baby goes for eight thousand six hundred nineteen dollars. And then I got an Iron Bowl trailer, eighty-three inches wide by twenty feet long, same sixteen tilt, four stationary. And that baby goes for eight thousand three hundred ninety-nine. And if I was to put my two cents in, I would like the Iron Bowl one better, just because it has a little toolbox on the front. And it looks a little bit more sturdy. Not like I said.
The cheaper.
That is the cheaper.
Yeah.
I got my pictures and all the other.
What was the price of that again?
Eighty-three and eighty-six.
Eighty-three ninety-nine and eighty-six nineteen. When I talked to them, they said they had both of these in stock, so it sounds like it's a run over there, grab it type of deal. Or we can wait to hear back from Howie or whatever up there.
Well, the toolbox is nice and you can keep your chains and everything.
Chains, sure, absolutely. And just always with that trailer. And just looking at the pictures, I mean, you can tell there's a difference. Yes. You got a little bit more metal there. Or we got the golf cart trailer again. Doesn't matter to me. Got options. Golf cart trailer is way cheaper. Can't hold a skid roller though.
Randy was very biased.
What? I don't want to buy two trailers, so maybe that really buy, even though it's overkill for the mower. At least we have the option, the option to hold a skid roller.
So David, wherever you're going.
Yeah.
I'd be better on fire than skid roller.
Yeah, those are about burned out too. The thing's got a million hours on it, I don't know what you want. Tracks, won't burn tracks off.
Been a busy year.
Where would you store it, Quanta?
E. Did you say where we're gonna store it? Yeah, yes, I would say the Quanta, yeah. Oh yeah, she'll fit in there, we got plenty of room there.
We got a lot of room, yeah.
Oh yeah. Plenty of room to store more junk.
And lights you can see.
Yeah, plenty of lights, we got one at six in there. Right? She gets sunlight through the holes in her.
Alright, I'm making motion to approve the iron trailer for eight thousand three hundred ninety-nine dollars.
I'll second it.
Motion from Abby to approve the purchase of the Iron Bowl trailer at the cost of eight thousand three hundred ninety-nine dollars. Seconded by Tracy. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pos. Carries unanimously. Speed self-trailer. Okay. Speaking of trailers. Speed trailer agreement. I guess this kind of fell into cracks when we got our speed sign, our speed limit trailer. But we put something together to have an agreement to rent out our speed limit sign trailer. Just needs to be a simple. What is the fee, how many days, how many days per, how much per day? What's in that, like, any town wants to rent it out, they can.
Have you had interest yet?
No one else, we really haven't.
It's just nice to have in our back pocket.
Yeah, somebody does, we use a lot of their one detour.
Oh yeah, they will, they will request it, just to have it.
Yep. I've been proactive.
So what, would it be a day? Do you have any ideas?
Wait, what do you make me spare for?
How much should it be for?
At fifteen hundred? Three, or mid-three.
Yeah. What did we pay when we rented it? Oh, I thought, oh yeah, they just let us use it.
The county actually has a link on their website, I believe, where you can go and request it. I think it was off of that.
Okay.
So what they did is they just had their request come to their ears and they would put it out those certain days.
But, does it usually say to save the spot for two weeks, do you think? I mean, what do you think?
Well, when I put it up at NEX, I was there for about two weeks and ran it the whole time, so that's without being charged. But it does have a solar panel on it, so that helps the batteries.
I don't think it has to be too extravagant or can you think?
One hundred bucks a week or?
That's kind of what I was thinking.
Ten bucks a day.
I was gonna say, I feel like we should go by day.
You think so?
Yeah. Because if somebody has an event, probably only want it for a day.
Or you can do, yeah, buy it ten bucks a day or.
The thing is, is I'm gonna wanna take it there and pick it up, so that's gas on me.
Right.
If you guys wanna.
I don't want anyone else moving or delivering and bringing it back, that throws another.
Is that what essentially means giving them the keys to all the padlocks, I don't know.
We should say twenty dollars a day.
Well, we could, we could just charge the delivery fee of twenty-five bucks and ten bucks a day.
That's a good idea.
Covers gas.
Pick up the delivery, yeah.
I mean, we're not trying to make money.
Right, exactly.
Kind of a community service and and there's no insurance involved because it's covered by us, right? So.
It wouldn't be, yeah.
Is that my suggestion? Can we draw something up?
Yeah, I'll draw, I'll just draw it up and then we'll be able to draw it up, we'll go it up, yeah.
Sounds good, we.
I didn't even draw it up myself without talking to you guys, man.
Yeah, we did kind of briefly talk about it.
We did, we just never said any pricing and it just kind of fell through the cracks.
Yeah.
I just had to borrow it. Hey, we're doing that, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Next time.
Next time. Yep. Okay. Um, okay, last thing on the new business is computer equipment and software. So I'm working through getting everything updated here. Uh, I've got the pricing on Microsoft Office. I don't have it, but yeah, something like twelve fifty a month, twelve thousand fifty cents a month. Uh, for Lauren and Zach on that government pricing. Uh, which is pretty good for these guys. But what I've done in the past is I've just gone out and gotten like off lease equipment. So it's usually been two, two, three years old. I'm kind of dirt cheap, but I'm tired of these things together. I think it's time to just buy something new. Uh, we budgeted for it. I think we budgeted like fifteen hundred bucks for all this book this year. Um, so I can get them for five hundred, six hundred bucks. But how do you guys want to do that? Do you mean just go buy the equipment because it's in the budget? Do you mean come to your bids?
Oh, I mean.
You can do it.
I think, I, I trust you with this. I mean, you're the best person here and we already budgeted money, I located with the board, so I I, I guess you.
As long as I stay within budget.
Yeah, as long as you stay within our budget and I don't think it really matters, I guess.
And I'm going, I'm not gonna, and I know what these guys need, they don't need extravagant computers, they just need the basic.
Yeah.
You know, can be on office, can be on email.
So would it be three?
Two. Yeah, um, Chief already has one.
Yeah.
So just Zach and Lauren in there here. And then years before them, end of October, this Windows ten's coming in play.
I remember Lauren saying that.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Kind of wondering if they're gonna get it done this fall.
I will, okay, but.
Yeah, I just didn't want to do anything, I'm talking to you guys first.
You're the expert.
Yeah. Yeah, I've been pricing, I've been trying to get the government pricing on two years, but by two, there's no break.
I suppose they want you to buy ten.
Yes, they want to buy ten, yeah. They want volume pricing, but if I forget how like, not like, boom. But no, I tried going to my company and I'm like, I'm not gonna do that either, so. I mean, the discount is, I, I don't get a discount. Give the prices. I go explore, go through Amazon, so. And get your fast food through Amazon, so. Yeah, we'll do it that way, but.
And you'll set it all up?
I'll set it all up, yeah. Yeah, there'll be no installation fees, nothing like that, all, all myself, so. Yeah, it's okay, so. Probably on Sunday, but. So we're out, so I just make sure that, yeah. Get extra prices or whatever, but as long as I'm under budget, you guys control it, we'll do it that way. I'm just, I'm turning in receipts, I'm not making any money off of it at all. Your bareness. Yeah, whatever I paid is what.
That's a transaction.
Yeah. So what we're gonna do, cool.
Okay.
Alright. Whole business. Again, not much has happened. Oh, okay, that is all business. You can do that. What was that idea here?
Caroline had asked about the twelve hundred dollars for the pack back from last issue of Iberica.
Yeah.
She wanted that twelve hundred dollars.
Yeah, she submitted twelve hundred dollars worth of time and labor to, for the pack backs, you know, put it back on. We submitted that to insurance, we got the check from the insurance, so the library like twelve hundred dollars. Insurance covered it, so I think we just make the library check for twelve hundred. Called good.
Is that what we got from insurance?
We got more than twelve hundred.
Okay, we then gave her four thousand, but we got two thousand, Dr. Moore, so I mean, yeah. It was kind of washed, yeah.
It was included in what she put in.
Yeah, we got two thousand and two hundred and two, so. Yeah.
I mean, she did that on her own time, correct?
Yes.
Well, I mean, they got paid for it, a little bit.
So we got, they did it while it was working.
But yeah, it's listed, it's listed on replacement costs.
I mean, they came in on off hours, didn't they, two?
Yeah, just a city labor to restock books, twelve hundred dollars. Yeah, five fifty-one for city tile and marble and the Serco invoice for twenty-nine ninety-eight for a cost of forty-seven forty-nine minus deductible, so twenty-two point nine two. So we can do a percentage of the deductible or we can give her the full twelve hundred, that's just where we're at.
Let's go into the libraries and fund care, right?
Correct, to the library.
Right.
Well, that's, that's all it's.
Yeah.
I was, I think, I think that, yeah, I'm fine if they're going to, back to the library.
I'm sure she needs some work and.
Yeah.
Work and money.
Do we need a motion?
Uh, I'd be more, I'd, yeah, I'd be comfortable more.
I make a motion to take twelve hundred dollars out of the insurance check and give it right back to the library.
From Randy to reimburse the library twelve hundred dollars from the insurance check from the day of loss, four one twenty-five. Twelve hundred dollars to return back to the library for their restocking books. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Abby, all in favor?
Aye.
Carries unanimously. Perfect. Anything else? All business. Again, we were just in this room, so not a lot has happened. It's all my stuff, so we'll move into community reports.
Remember last year when we talked about the, um, pool building getting closed in the top?
Mm-hmm.
Just with some tin or something, yeah, they're working on that.
Nice.
So maybe we won't have it be so full of leaves.
Oh, that'd be nice.
Birds and dirt. It won't be tight, but it'd be better. So. Other than that, I don't have a report from the chicken barbecue or anything yet, but he, he just, I mean, we all know that we did well, so. Helen's been kind of tied up. I talked to her just last week and she's like, yeah, I'm gonna get that ready for, yes, we just know the numbers, but yeah, so. She's got a lot on her plate, so. She said a lot on her plate, so, and we knew we made money and we have all our bills, you know, paid, so it's.
I met with the EMT, I'm not the EMT, yeah, emergency management EMS board that was last week. They had some, I don't know what to say, but just, there's some stuff come up. So as you guys know, sixty-five project up there is going on and it's gonna continue next year. So it sounds like they're gonna be closing the southern part of that next year. And they've asked, the state had asked to use part of the right away there for storing, I don't know, pipes or equipment or whatever in the EMS, lot, so we have approved that, you know, the construction portion, you know, projects, we didn't care. And then we talked about door access, like updating the locks and to make it more secure. Give them a badge access to the doors and a key lock, just wanted it more secure. They get a good question, just thirteen hundred bucks to secure the whole building, okay, so. He had the funding for that in his budget. So yeah, just some budgets he wanted to cover with us because they were just hired. He was comfortable suspending, but he had budgeted. Uh, but then he gave an update on the storm. Um, there is no federal funding as of right now from the storm, so. Yeah. But he said, continue to send those receipts and continue to send all the.
Does he not have enough towns in on it or did he give you a reason or?
We didn't hit that threshold yet.
Wow, must be a pretty high threshold.
And we've got everything in, right? I gave you that. Maybe that looks like the, turn the receipts in. I gave you the. Yeah. There was something for, no, it wasn't that. Something else I gave you. Yeah, I made sure you got the right one.
We're still cutting stuff down too, so.
Yeah, look at all the money we spent.
I poured you something from an Adam, somebody. That was out of Echo.
That's our insurance guy.
Yeah.
Yeah. He's actually the adjuster.
Yeah, maybe that's something like I'm thinking of then, okay. Somebody, yeah, somebody was asking for every invoice that we had. Maybe I'm getting my wires crossed.
Yeah, Adam goes the adjuster.
Yeah, maybe I'm getting my wires crossed.
He's just subcontract from the insurance, so.
Let me check, let me, let me check with, with Eric again. Make sure that, maybe you are right then. Maybe you did that the right stuff. Okay. Maybe, okay, let me follow up again. Yeah, he gives a report from, from the county, but yeah, the DOT did what they're supposed to do. Three hundred loads by Rockwell.
Yeah, I don't doubt it.
Two hundred from Ventura and, I was gonna say that the DOT helped out with.
Oh, Garner.
Garner, yeah.
Yeah, he, I don't know if he was reporting by Garner. Yeah, we were, and we won.
What a title.
Yeah, not a victory I won, but anyway. I'm gonna continue to chase that until I can try to get something for us.
That was a lot of unexpected expects.
I'm gonna continue to chase it until I can find something, hopefully. Council discussion, Tracy?
Nothing.
Right?
Nope.
Nope.
Point discussion, Zach?
Um, I met with that, uh, gentleman guy that Adam today. He took a second look at the old roof. He is going to put in a recommendation to EMC, our insurance, about replacement because she is junk. That doesn't mean we're gonna get no, yeah.
But at least this time he took a better look.
Gonna try.
Yeah, and I think Chris was also on the same page that we should probably replace it whether we get any money from him or not, because there's a lot of lits and shingles and it ain't gonna fix itself. So, and I have a quote from Jansen, I can get more from other people if you guys would like. He gave me a quote for reshingling and fixing the kupelos.
Let's see what the insurance company says first.
For sure. For sure. He said probably seven to death, ten day turnaround or something like that, so maybe next meeting I'll have something to report. And yeah. I had a sanitary survey, what was that, last week? Something like that. DNR's surveying the water side of this and didn't have any major deficiencies, so just have some recommendations.
Always.
For sure. Other than that, we are in compliance.
Anything? What do they give us?
I haven't heard about that. I don't think it's dry enough yet for that. So.
Anything expensive recommendations or just?
No, in the recommendations, we don't have to do those. They're not requirements, they're recommendations.
Anything you'd like to see that?
I mean, I haven't really read the full deals yet, but like, like the ones on the top of my head are, like alarms at the water tower to say that, hey, pump didn't turn on. She's, she's not pumping. You, you're gonna run out of water, pal. And like alarms in the chlorine room saying, hey, I'm leaking chlorine. Do not come in here. You're gonna make her out. Stuff like that.
Seems safe.
Right, yeah, they're, they're no brainers in my opinion, but they're not required. They're just good ideas. Stuff like that. I have the full report in the office. If anyone would like to look at it.
Vigorating?
Something vigorating? Oh, it is. It's like a nine page document. It's beating the dead horse really. Exactly. So.
Gotta beat them, no?
Yep.
Anything else there?
I don't think so.
Okay, sir. John, anything?
When was that last time Ryan asked about chairs?
Oh, yes.
My chair's got the ILE going on. I don't know if they even see that.
I sat in your chair, like, yeah.
Mine sheds over here.
No, it's an office chair. Yeah, if you wanted a.
I mean, I think all of them are.
Right.
Do we like the leather? Do you want the, the mesh background? Those are wide range chairs. That's just around width, but yeah. Staples and sitting chairs, what's that?
The guy, the guy we get the stuff for the pool. Yeah, that's where I get my chairs from. And they buy them in bulk and then turn around and sell them to the school districts.
Someone to cost at the hospital.
I have the second one here, just like.
Do you have a contact?
Yep.
Do you have a contact you can send us?
Oh, yeah, Michael. Oh, you just see the delivery guy, okay? Well, Michael's stuck. He'll be in my office early part of next week.
Make sure he comes during business hours, unlike the other guy.
Oh, yeah, the delivery guy?
Yeah.
I believe Spencer like at three AM. Well, he needs to quit it out, alright? He shows up my village like five AM. Ain't nobody here five AM.
Who would be there at five AM?
Hey, you come rolling in.
Can I use your bathroom?
Yeah. He leaves really early.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Home from Abby to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Adjourn, ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much.